Many folks don't know the story of Premier. Premier Heating and Air was founded in 2001 with just a small group of people. Initially, Premier's handful of people went to work with a core value and set of principles based on "a good name is rather to be chosen than great riches." With one move in 2005 and then a leap of faith in 2010, Premier is now in its current location and now one of the largest heating and air companies in Middle Georgia. Still, every day our people walk through our warehouse doors and into the doors of your home with the same core value: A good name is rather to be chosen than great riches. Call Premier Heating and Air today and get your AC system checkup for just $49. Need a new system? Get up to $2,000 on qualified systems. Log on to dublin.premierishere.com. The choice is clear: Choose Premier. Premier Heating and Air, a locally owned and operated company.
The May 1st, 2024 meeting of the Dublin City Council will come to order. I'd ask Josh Powell to provide the invocation and please remain standing after the invocation for the pledge to the flag. Mr. Powell.
Goodbye, your heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the beautiful weather we've been experiencing here in our fair town. We thank you for the dedication of our good, hardworking employees. We thank you for the opportunity to reflect on their service to the city and celebrate their service with the city. We thank you for our mayor and council and their dedication to the betterment of our community. We ask your blessing over all the decisions, Lord, that's made today and ask that you guide us and protect us in all we do. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to start this morning with a couple of special presentations, and I almost didn't recognize Frankie. You look very relaxed and casual, so it's good to see. I didn't know if we were actually going to be able to get you back to City Hall, but we're glad to see you. And so we'll start now with some special presentations. And our mayor pro tem Tess Godfrey will make the presentation. Mr. Powell, if you will provide the notes, please.
We could have Councilman Godfrey, Mayor Pro Tem come up, and Chris Harden, if you'd step up front, please.
Frankie.
While you're coming, I'll read a little bit about you. Chris Harden began her tenure with the city of Dublin in August of 1983 as a cashier in the customer service department. In 1984, she was promoted to bookkeeper in the finance department. And in 1985, she was promoted to accounts payable clerk. And then in November of that same year, she took on being the computer operator. And I think, as I understand and talking with her, she was, I mean, the city was converting to computers for the first time. In 1987, Chris was again promoted to customer service supervisor. And then in 1990, she was promoted to purchasing director, where she continued until her retirement with 40 years of service. Chris was not only an asset to the city of Dublin, but also to local civic organizations and state purchasing associations, holding offices from treasurer to president in both sectors, and honored as a buyer of the year in 2012. Chris plans to spend her newfound time in retirement with her two children and her five beautiful grandchildren. And Chris, I can just tell you, it was a pleasure working with you at the city and you're a model for all other employees, and we thank you for your dedication to the city.
It's an honor of me. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right.
Mr. Coney?
Mr. Coney.
You're next. Frankie Coney began his tenure with the city of Dublin in February of 1994 as a laborer in the street department. And then in 1995, Frankie was quickly promoted to service tech one, and then in 96, he was promoted to service tech two in water construction. In 2000, Frankie was again promoted to equipment operator in the public works department. And in 2009, Frankie was promoted to sanitation superintendent. In 2022, Frankie was promoted to public works director overseeing the operation and personnel of sanitation, street, and cemetery divisions of the city, where he continued until his retirement, 30 years, after 30 years of service. Frankie was an asset to the city of Dublin with his dedication and leadership, not only to his department, but strive to promote the best services to the citizens of Dublin. Frankie plans to spend his newfound time in retirement with his grandchildren fishing and hunting, and I'm sure a few trips to the mountains. So, thank you, Frankie. It's been a pleasure working with you. We're certainly going to miss you, and thank you for all your service.
Thank you all. All right. Now, the big question is, are you guys going to hang around for the rest of the council meeting? And they are out the door. Okay, we'll get started with our regular agenda items. Number one is approval of April 18th, 2024 city council meeting minutes. Council members have had the meeting minutes in the packet and opportunity to review. Are there any suggested corrections or amendments? If there are none, do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Godfrey to approve the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move to item number two, which is approval of bills over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
Council has a copy of all the bills in your packet.
Any questions related to the bills over $15,000? If none, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Smith to approve the bills over $15,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three is approval of purchases over $15,000, which we have two on the agenda this evening: A lift station pump through the water utility department and a water department vehicle. Mr. Powell.
Yes, for the lift station pump, this is for the repair and services associated with that of the, one of the pumps at the Honeysuckle Lift Station. The price is $31,289.37 from Xylem Water Solutions USA Incorporated. This is something that we have budgeted money to cover and ask the council to approve that purchase. The second item is a vehicle for the water department. This is for water construction division. It's going to replace a 2007 Ford F-150 that has over 250,000 miles on it. This is for a 2024 Dodge Ram Quad cab from Beck Auto Sales for $41,072. The expected delivery date on that is six months.
Okay, we discussed these in pre-council. Are there any additional questions for staff at this time? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Mascaro, a second from Councilman Godfrey. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, ayes have it. Those purchases are approved, and we will move to item number four on the agenda, which is discussion and action to approve the termination of a lease agreement with the Oconee Holding Company and Walter's Income Properties. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2415, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council to approve the termination of lease agreements between the Oconee Holding Company and the city of Dublin and Walter's Income Properties LP in the city of Dublin for a parking lot in downtown Dublin, Georgia, to provide authority for approvals of the termination of said lease agreements, to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes. This is just for a small section, which is a portion of the parking lot that runs behind the skyscraper facility. And it, on this plot that you're looking at, it's all of track seven, all of track four, and a section of track six, which is basically the thoroughfare that's been utilized by many traveling their cars, the cut through, which has caused some issues for safety concerns in the parking lot. But it's also the reasoning behind the termination here. The owner of the brewery, which is 226 DTD Ventures LLC, which is adjacent to those tracks, is requesting that they be able to be utilized, they are now the owner of it, and they'd be able to utilize it for part of their development with the brewery.
Okay.
This will not have any effect on the remainder of the parking lot or the other two access points that are on Lawrence and Madison Street.
All right, before we have any discussion on it, Mr. Mascaro.
Mr. Mayor, I need to excuse myself from this because I have a vested interest in the property.
Okay, thank you, and we'll let you know as soon as we're complete with this discussion on this item. All right, just for the record, Mr. Mascaro has left the room for our discussion on this item. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this motion, or regarding this resolution? If there are no questions, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown and a second from Councilman Griggs. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of termination of the lease agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. This item has been approved.
Students from Oconee Fall Line Technical College have the vision of a brighter future, and it all starts with hands-on training from instructors with years of professional experience. They recognize the value of an education that's affordable, flexible, and close to home, one that offers 130-plus diverse programs in high-demand fields and propels graduates straight into their careers with a strong foundation for success. OFTC students know that brighter futures begin when they choose OFTC. Are you ready to begin? Become an hour. Oconee Fall Line Technical College: Careers begin here.
All right, boys, if you want to go to college, you have to clear out another one of these. What if we told you there was a better way to save for your kid's college than pickle jars? Morris Bank's Savings Builder Account and Mula makes saving for your kid's college easier than ever. All you have to do is connect the account to your debit card, where it automatically rounds up your purchases to the nearest dollar, depositing that spare change into a Mula account, where it will grow into a nice little nest egg for whatever your kids have their sights set on.
All right, we'll now move to item number five on the agenda, which is discussion and action on a resolution to authorize the city to join as a co-applicant on a grant application with the development authority. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2416, a resolution of the city of Dublin by and through its mayor and council to authorize the city manager to approve the city to join as a co-applicant with the Dublin Lawrence County Development Authority for an Economic Development Administration Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance Programs grant for the infrastructure improvements to the Georgia Highway 257 rail serve site, to authorize the mayor upon the approval of the city manager to execute documents to affect the same, to set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. When Washington, the corporation that's coming to the Highway 257 rail serve site, was negotiating with the local authorities on coming to Dublin, part of the negotiations included some infrastructure improvements, which were a, two water lines being connected over to the site, a road being constructed for access to their property from Highway 257, as well as a connection of the sewer line from the corner of Highway 257 and the bypass where the city's sewer is going to end, connecting that over to the Washington site. So, in order to pay for that, the development authority is applying for an EDA grant to fund that. And they, because the city will become the ultimate owner of the infrastructure that's installed, EDA is requiring that the city be a co-applicant with the development authority. And so staff is asking that the council approve this resolution so that we can work out the details and join as a co-applicant on this grant application.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
I have a question. So with us approving this, will this have any impact on Mrs. Tara Bradshaw's job duties? Will she have to do anything with this grant or solely?
No, it's going to be totally on the development authority. They are going to engage, as I understand, the Heart of Georgia Regional Commission to administer the grant. And in fact, the regional commission is administering our sewer project grant, which is also an EDA grant. So, and this, as long as they remain in compliance, which is going to be one of the terms that we'll have to include in an agreement between us and the development authority, then we should have no impact from this, other than just being a co-applicant.
It won't mess up any of our grants?
No.
That she's working on. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, all right, so yeah, just for clarification, there's no city money involved and no grant application labor time through our, through our staff. My understanding, based on our pre-council discussion, is that our engineering department will be involved in making sure that the infrastructure is built to city standards, assuming that they get the grant, which hopefully they will, and that the city will then take ownership of that infrastructure after it's completed, and as long as it's built to the city's standards.
And we would be inspecting that work anyway for anything, any infrastructure that we would be taking on.
Okay.
No matter what the development was.
All right, so at this time, do we have a motion to approve the city to join with the development authority as a co-applicant on the EDA grant?
Make a motion to allow us to authorize the city to join as a co-applicant on the EDA grant.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Colby and a second from Councilman Griggs. Any discussion on the motion?
Go bless.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number six on the agenda, which is a resolution authorizing the award of a bid for a, the water construction and sanitation facility construction project. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2417, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to authorize the award of a bid for the construction and renovation of the sanitation and water construction facility on Truxton Street, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. We received one bid for this project, and it came in at three, just over three and a half million dollars. We've been working with the sole bidder about any cost-saving measures we can take. This resolution will authorize me to approve and award the final bid, and then also execute any change orders that are needed to affect any cost savings or any change orders that are needed as we go through the project. This is staff's recommendation. We have, this is being funded with SPOST dollars through the 2018 SPOST, and any supplement that's needed to our original budgeted amount will also come from SPOST dollars.
Okay, we discussed this for a while at pre-council. Are there any additional questions for staff at this time?
Yes.
All right, go for it.
I just want to know, if we approve this, do you know a date or time or expected date they will start on this project? Next year?
All right, that's a great question. We have a-
I mean, the staff would probably like to know.
Yeah, so we have a representative from the contractor here. If you don't mind, if you could come up and-
This is Jared Akins.
Yeah, if you could just introduce yourself and who you're representing.
Yeah, I'm Jared Akins. I represent Paul S. Akins Company. It's a family general contracting business. I'm the third generation, so. But anyway, to your question, I think we have to work with the city to relocate, you know, the staff and their operations there. I'm not sure how long that would, I don't know if anybody knows at this point how long that would take, but you know, as far as our operations, we could be ready to go, I would think, by the end of June.
Okay.
All right, so just, just for the public's benefit and clarifying what's going on, we currently have our water construction department and our sanitation department sharing a facility on Truxton, on Truxton Street. And that facility is very old, it's in bad condition. When the facilities committee and council visited that building two years ago, you know, we saw that the conditions were not really good, especially considering the people who worked there, our city employees, were in conditions that really were not up to the standards that we would hope. And so, in an effort to give them a more modern facility and increase employee morale and have the types of amenities, and nothing fancy, but to have at least a decent workplace, we put two years ago into our sort of capital investment plan for city's facilities, this project. And we've looked at different ways of doing it. At first, we looked at just a total demolition and rebuild, and the way that construction costs have gone through inflation and have skyrocketed, our city management team came back and said that probably the better way to do it is to maintain the skeleton of the building, the structure of the building, and then go into the insides and just redo everything on the inside. And, and so that's what was put out to bid, and that's what your company has bid on and put a proposal in for. And as part of that, though, our current employees who work for water construction and sanitation are going to have to be moved out of that facility. We're going to have to find a temporary place for them. And so my understanding is that even though you may be ready to go in June, the city's got to find a place to relocate our departments before you can pull the trigger on starting that demo work and reconstruction work. So I just wanted to provide that background for the public's benefit about where this project came from and where we are now. Are there any other comments or questions from council members or Mr. Powell?
I was just going to ask, could you tell us, I know it was in your, or I think it was in your materials, the total time for construction?
I believe it's about 10 months. Does that sound right? I can't really remember, but I think that's what I had it at.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick comment. I think what we all stated, and I think city manager understands, is that we're looking for, you know, a project that's aesthetically pleasing, it's long-lasting, and it's modern working conditions for the betterment of our city employees. So I think we're all on board with that.
So we understand that you guys are trying to identify some cost savings, maybe up to half a million dollars worth of cost savings. Luckily, we have this special purpose sales tax from 2018 that has funds, if there, you know, if there are some things, we, as a council, we stated in pre-council, we just don't want to cut anything that's going to create a, materials that aren't going to be long-lasting or an environment that's not going to be suitable for the employees. But if we can find cost savings in, in other ways, then we definitely support that.
Absolutely, yeah.
And this would authorize you, as city manager, to work with the contractor and your team to find those cost savings where possible. Okay, is that it? Does that summarize everything fairly?
Yes.
All right, are we ready for a, a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the award of the bid and to approve, to allow the city manager to approve change orders as needed.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilman Colby and a second from Councilman Godfrey. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Well, it took two years, Tess.
It does take time.
Please time.
But we're continuing to push forward on all these projects.
We invite y'all to come down to Holy Smokes Barbecue, Dublin's fresh, everyday barbecue source. 1100 Hillcrest Parkway, 272 Ribs. You can place your orders online, dublinbbq.com. We're all about faith, family, and friends. And remember, life's too short to eat bad barbecue. We're so thankful for you, Dublin. You guys have been so good to us, and we just want to invite you guys just to come on and experience what we think good barbecue is.
Hi, I'm Brandy, and I would like to invite you to experience our newly renovated mammography suite at the Fairview Park Hospital Breast Center. Our breast center has its own dedicated entrance with a relaxing boutique-like waiting area. You can make your appointment online anytime at fairviewparkhospital.com or by calling Most appointments take 30 minutes or less, and we will have your results back to your doctor within 24 hours.
And this is another one that has been out there for a while. This is item number seven, which is authorizing the award of a bid on the Jackson Street Crosswalk Project and the Madison Street Revitalization Project. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2418, a resolution of the mayor and council to authorize the award of a bid or bids for the Jackson Street Crosswalk Project and the Madison Street Project, set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. We had, for a long time, we've been trying to get bids on the Jackson Street, first I'll talk about Jackson Street, the Jackson Street Crosswalk Project. When the most recent resurfacing was done by GDOT along their right-of-way, which included Jackson Street, we didn't have them strike back the old crosswalk that was there along West Jackson Street with the idea that we were going to relocate that. And we've been working with GDOT for some time. Matthew Bradshaw and his team have been going back and forth with them on trying to make it safer for pedestrians to cross Jackson Street, but also make it where it lines up with the main entrance to Jackson Street Plaza. And so this, we've finally gotten GDOT approval for that. We bid this out as a standalone project, but did not receive any bids, so we combined it with the Madison Street Project. And we did get two bids for those. The Madison Street Project, as we've talked about before, is a streetscape project. A large part of the project is relocating all the power lines and utility lines that are above ground to be underground from Church Street all the way to Jefferson Street. That has already been approved by council, and Georgia Power is working on that now. This is the construction portion of the project for the actual surface treatment, which will include doing some bump outs along Madison Street that will provide for areas that we can plant some trees for the mayor's tree planting initiative, as well as other aesthetically pleasing amenities. It will also include doing brick pavers along Madison Street to make it a true pedestrian-friendly area and make a real big difference there, right there in front of the farmer's market and on down to the skyscraper building. The bids, the low bid for both projects together was from Pride Contracting Incorporated. We did contact the other bidder to see, because they were actually the low bid on the Jackson Crosswalk Project, but they were not willing to do that as a standalone project. So, staff's recommendation and what I would end up approving is Pride Contracting Incorporated for both projects. It was $299,048.78 on Jackson Street Crosswalk and on the Madison Street Project, that's We are, there are maybe some small adjustments we can make to the Madison Street Project to have, incur a little bit of cost savings, and, but we will work with staff on that and make final award on that project with the approval of this resolution.
Okay. And how much was the grant that we received from the state?
It was 3.2, 3.3 million dollars.
Right, and so a lot of that, the 3.3 million, is being spent on putting the utilities underground, which is the work that's currently underway. So this is for, sort of, the second phase of that work.
This is what everybody's going to really see.
Right, so, and the source of funding, our city treasurer has indicated that we have funds in the grant account that would be used, funds from our 2006 SPOST that were left over from-
That's from Jackson Street Crosswalk.
And that, that money has been, that was left over from almost a decade ago.
Right.
Which is good that we're finding a way to use that. And then also, we received sort of some unexpected LMIG money from the state that can be used on, on street resurfacing and, and streetwork projects. So that would be the source of the funding for these things. Basically, a large grant from the state, the LMIG funding from the state, and then some old '06, 2006 sales tax dollars. All right, so do we have any questions for staff?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to know, where is Pride Contracting Incorporated from?
They, or do you guys-
I don't, where?
And you've, I guess you've checked their background and-
We're doing that, y'all.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Nope.
All right, if there are no other questions, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
We have a motion to approve from Mr. Mascaro. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Godfrey. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it.
Century 21 Durden Carnegie is here to help buying or selling a home convenient and as simple as possible. Call on Agents Brian Howell, Charlene Lamp, Adam White, David Deves, Jennifer Bradley, Mark Bateman, Kim Thompson, Pamela Lee, Edie Webb, Jay Brantley, Jim Jarrett, Reina Dufferley, Yvonne Robertson, or broker George Durden. Century 21 Durden Carnegie Realty has been helping people just like you buy and sell a home in the Dublin area for generations. Our local knowledge and negotiation skills can guide you on the path to your dreams. Century 21 Durden Carnegie. Call 478-272-1535. Stop by our office on Veterans Boulevard or log on to c21dublin.com.
From humble beginnings with a desire to serve the Dudley community, Bank of Dudley has grown to five locations, serving Lawrence, Twigs, and surrounding counties. Serving our community since 1905, the Bank of Dudley is looking forward to its second century of community banking. Drop in today to any of our five locations: Jeffersonville, Dudley, East Dublin, Veterans Boulevard, and downtown Dublin. Bank of Dudley, member FDIC and an equal housing lender.
We'll now move to item number eight, which is action on surplus items. Mr. Powell.
We have, let's see, seven items for council's consideration for surplus. There are two vehicles and then some office furniture and fixtures.
All right, and we're, we have the pictures of the surplus items up there. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to declare these items as surplus from Councilman Mascaro with a second from Councilman Smith. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. These items will be placed, I guess these will go to GovDills, like all of them, right?
There are two vehicles and then some office furniture and fixtures.
All right, and we're, we have the pictures of the surplus items up there. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this? If not, do we have a motion?
Maybe both.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to declare these items as surplus from Councilman Mascara with a second from Councilman Smith. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The eyes have it. These items will be placed, I guess these will go to GovDills, like all of them, right? These items will be placed on GovDills so that the public will have an opportunity to bid on them. All right, that is the conclusion of our regular agenda. Now it's time for citizens' comments. Do we have any comments for, from any citizens today? All right, we do not have any citizens' comments, so, oh, yes. Always good to see you, Ms. Calvin.
Thank you, good to see you all. It's still morning, okay, good morning. I was, I was sitting there and I watched the people receive their 10-year-plus award. I thought of something, and I thought about, this was the perfect time to say something to you all. On, in January of 2024, my husband, JW Calvin, was sitting right here and received his 10-plus award, and Councilman Brown was actually the one that presented that on behalf of you all. Thank you for that. So it occurred to me that, and I made my notes so I could stay within time, but on April 6, 2024, he received his 56th Transition Award, I would say, from the Lord. It's gone to heaven. But he served, he served in every capacity of his life, and he served the city well. He used to tell us that when we were asleep, he was making water, so don't go buy bottled water, so. Good. He served God when he was licensed very early on, and he passed at a church for 17 years, and he served his family very well. My daughter, 11, our daughter Ariel, will miss him. John Wesley Calvin III will miss him. My mother, who's 88, is still going to the farm, saying it doesn't seem real, and as all of us are touched. But I wanted to say that, you know, many times the people, when they get, when they retire, they receive something like a watch or a pennant, but, and that's it. But when he retired from this earth, he left this earth, and he was taken so very quickly, very devastating. But the city came, and the city where he served showed love, and he showed support, and you brought us a feeling that we'll never forget. Many, many people came, but I know that when his, the place where he served, where he just received a pennant, came to show love and brought cards and food and just came. The presence, the very presence meant something to us. I love Maya Angelou, and the quote that she said was, "Many people will forget what you said. Many people will forget what you did, but never, ever will people forget how you made them feel." Thank you for the way you made us feel, and you still make us feel. I wanted to say this, we're waiting on our custom design, my sister's very particular, but, and you will receive a thank you, but I wanted to publicly say to our mayor, our council, and even the citizens of Dublin who love our family, thank you for showing us love. We'll never, ever forget the way you made us feel. Thank you.
Ms. Calvin. All right. Any, any other comments this evening? All right, we'll now go to council comments. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gives you something to ponder. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Calvin. Want to, again, recognize those that were presented with their awards today for their long-term service, and we're grateful for their service to the city, and certainly wish them well in any of their future endeavors. And also, also thank staff for working through all the projects that we've got on the, on the horizon, and let's see in that come to fruition. And also want to welcome all of our, our new employees. Thank y'all for choosing to be a part of us. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Godfrey.
I just want to say, thank you all for coming out, and I'm trying to fight back tears, because I love Sonya so much, and thank you all for coming. I'm so proud of our new employees, welcome. Thanks to the employees who spent 40 years, 10, starting with JW. Thank you for his service, and Chris Harden and...
Frankie Calvin.
How can I forget? Thank them for their service, and thank our council and our nice and very efficient city manager. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Godfrey. Councilman Colby.
Thank you, Sonya, for reminding us while we're here on this earth is to serve one another. And so I'm so excited that we have all these new employees, David Sawyer, Robbie Petrie, Karen Ferris, and Brooke Jones joining us. Welcome, we're so excited you're here. We're, we're excited to have you a part, and you can see, sometimes it takes us a long time to get things done. The processes in government are long and sometimes tiresome, but we are so grateful for each of you on staff that worked through those difficulties to bring us to days like today where we can actually see some progress and movement. To Chris and Frankie, we're so grateful for their time that they spent with us. Jay Roy, I wanted to congratulate you on the highest play, I think, last month on, at the Riverview Golf Course. Super excited to hear about that progress. We see each of you and the hard work, just like our infrastructure is underground. We know a lot of y'all seem like it's, it's underground work that you do, and it's not always seen, but we're so very grateful to have the opportunity to support you as you do that day-to-day work. Tomorrow is the National Day of Prayer at the Market on Madison. They have an 11:00 AM service as well as an evening service. Come out and pray for our community if you can.
Thank you for those comments. Councilman Griggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo what everybody else has said, and thank y'all for being here. Y'all have a great day and a great rest of the week.
All right, thank you. Councilman Smith.
Everything's been said, no comments today.
All right, thank you. Councilman Mascara.
Like, I'm going to echo Chris, everything's been said. Thank y'all for coming today.
All right, appreciate that. And Mr. Powell.
No comments.
All right, I want to thank everyone for coming, and our, can you give us the time and date of our next meeting?
It's going to be at 5:30 on May the 16th.
So that's 5:30, May 16th will be the next council meeting, and until that time, we're now adjourned. Thank you.